Antiques on York in Rockville, Indiana, 100 West York Street, celebrating our 10th year in business.
Want to make an order, Stephanie? Do you want to go first?
Sure.
As you know, we tabled the Emergency Preparedness Fund from last month and we'd like you to kind of go where we're at on that if you don't mind.
So first I want to start off by saying thank you for the council and the commissioners for supporting the opt-in for the governor's appropriated funding for Health First Indiana, is what it's called right now. And so we have an initiative now that kicked off in January called Health First Park County. As part of that initiative, we are doing an internal audit of the health department around all core services that the health department provides, ranging from vital records to sanitation, food inspections, as well as emergency preparedness. And as part of that internal audit, we are seeking to identify where our gaps are at the county and where we have opportunities to not only partner, but to really kind of revamp our processes and understand where we can have the biggest impact for our park county citizens. It has been noted that we do have some shortfalls. We have a village of individuals who have now came for our Health First Park County meetings that are willing to chip in and to see our momentum grow and gain for the health and wellbeing of park county citizens from now and until the future. So this is really a foundational year. Our goal for this year is to have impact in every township for park counties in terms of resources and services. In terms of the Emergency Preparedness Fund, what I would recommend to the council is that there were two months that were paid in the first six months of 2023 that were carryover dollars from the 2022 fiscal year. This grant runs off cycle of our budget appropriation. And so those two months, for the first six months of 2023, need to be reconciled. And that was already voted on by the council last year for that amount. In terms of the next six months, meaning July through, we had the health officer, I believe, and an employee of the health department that presented to the council. I do want to be clear that, you know, when we look at the legislation and what the health boards are obligated to, the action of the health board represents the fiscal recommendations to this council for those fundings. At budget appropriation time, the health board did put forth a recommendation for 2024, which I do believe was not actioned on at that time. We did the regular budget and then we did the Health First Indiana, which is called now. But the Emergency Preparedness Fund was not actioned on. Given the gap analysis that we are currently doing as part of our internal audit system, you know, I think that we need to go back to the health board and to the individual who is performing the functions and the duties and have a conversation about realistic expectations in terms of how could you, you know, get all the things done in your full-time role with sanitation and food inspection and then also make sure that we have all of the boxes checked. I will say that from a state perspective, I've had conversations with several from the central regions that have applauded the individual for the work that has been done and has a presence there within the district, within District 7. But I do believe that, you know, we can bring that back for discussion and then put forth an additional recommendation to revisit that initial vote that the board did put forth at the budget appropriation this past summer.
Questions on that?
No, I said, I'm having a conversation tonight. She's got a lot of control and I think we need to go back to pay those, go back to, let's get that grant cleaned up and then turn that last six months appropriation service back over to the board where it belongs.
So does this cover that, so there was also some operating supplies in that request. There was the administrator for social security and then a total of $16,557.1. So that is, that covers what you just spoke of, that's on the record?
I believe so. And if it doesn't, I will be back in contact with the council. We have a meeting tonight at 6:00 PM. I did talk with the staff member yesterday regarding some of the deliverables and the outfits and reconciling some of the memorandas and the exercises that are supposed to be completed in the county. We will definitely be back, let the board weigh in on these because I think that the knowledge, not only from this particular function of the health department, but all of our functions in this internal audit is important for us to plan because as part of the Health First Park County, and I don't want to stray away from your question, but we have health maintenance funds and other funds that we need to sunset before we utilize the governor appropriated dollars for this, this leave endeavors. And so I think it's important for us as a board to go back and say, okay, we put this forward as our recommendation for this particular line, the 9117. And we need to understand, you know, given our internal audit and given our gap between all core services, where do we need to invest those dollars? How do we need to invest those dollars? Do I need to recommend contracts or do I need to get some additional partners with memorandas to help us uphold the health involved in the community? So I think that it'll be interesting because it's not going to come down just to this ET line. It's going to come down to all of them. And so it's about the bigger picture. But of course, we want to pay our county employees for the work that has been completed and just shoring up those deliverables and making sure that we have a very accountable process to ensure that is of paramount importance for the health board.
So this $12,733 number is, that's for the six months, of course, go back to. So we only want the back two though, so sort that out. So we'll see, yeah, 16.
Is that what we're deciding here then? So we're still sitting on the six months?
Still sitting on the six months.
On the first to the end of 23, for the five. So we're not doing that? So you're not asking for the full $15,000 then, or you are? I guess I have to do.
So ideally, I think that we need to reconcile 2023, but we definitely have two months. I think we need to reconcile 2023 and then for January, three, I don't think months need to be evaluated.
Okay, so is there one, maybe two ways to skin this? We don't, I guess we do know the amounts for the 22 here, or at least for the administrator's side in your ladder, $37,070, $97,000.
That's for the river needs there.
Right. And then there would be a social security portion of that. And then the operating supplies are kind of separated from this at this point. So should it be, and I'm asking a question here. Should it be, that be the appropriation that we approve? Or should we approve it all and you will submit the claim to the auditor appropriately through the health board for the amount that needs to be?
That might be a better idea. And in that way, it's in your control and then you don't have to come back to deal with that. But it should just make it clear that it's come from the health board, not from anybody else down there. Comes from the health.
Does that make sense?
It does. And from our budget appropriation during this past year, we did motion and approve, but from the health board, that anything over $250 has to have the authorization, whether it's a supply expense or anything. But if it's not appropriated and it's over $250, then have our signatures on it.
Well, we did, as you referenced, you know, the health officer was here with the employee and they had this whole list of things that they wanted. And of course, our answer was, well, it was, has to come through the health board. I mean, that's what you guys do. And it was almost like, you know, I'm not sure what was going on there, but we said time to time again, it comes from the health board. But as you said, you're in the fiscal and then you come to.
And the thing that came from that one is that we approved the budgets submitted by the health board.
And I do apologize for that. I wasn't aware of that.
No, you had nothing to do with it.
No, I'm just letting you know what happened.
But I think for playing in the sandbox, moving forward, there needs to be those barriers and those understandings because legislatively we do, we are a fiscal authority that puts forth to this.
No, it's not not this way. You know, and what we did was, the health board, the health board.
Of course.
You know, we're in the health board.
But I am super excited about where we're going this year. It's going to be foundational and excited to come back at budget appropriation time to have the conversations. But you will start seeing a lot of memorandas from this year.
Well, we appreciate your efforts. I know you have other things to do besides. So we appreciate the comment this morning.
Of course.
Ladies and gentlemen, so I think we know what we need to do now. So we can even go ahead and do it right now since Stephanie's here. So they're buying into this now.
What we approve.
They're approving that $16,557.1.
And they will send the claim in for the appropriations. Two months ago.
Most of the main executives approve, all the favorites. Who? Thank you.
I would like to say before she leaves, but this is exactly where I saw you.
I know, you just want to take credit.
Well, I was going to say it was another exceptionally brilliant appointment.
But this isn't one that didn't work out.
You know, we've been fighting this lack of professional entity for years. And I knew this, Stephanie, we would get the newspaper and they're doing great. This is how it all works.
Go to work, Stephanie. Thank you.
Good job.
Chris, I'm going to let you go ahead and go because I know you need to move along.
Oh, nigger looking Chris.
Well, I did look at Chris. We'll get to the next, Chris, number two here, Stuart George.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
First thing I had was a demo estimate of a year. Call me after reading, just need $8960. And I'm trying to get that done for sometime in March. Next thing was, I just got the bill for UMAX yesterday. It came in about $1,500 under budget for a Wi-Fi project. And I checked in that budget fund, we don't have that yet. It's just $46,000.
Well, it's split. Half of that comes from work and half of it from working out.
And we talked about it in Commissioner Mayne's, you could get a request to us for that, we'll take care of that.
The article paper, half of it. You guys haven't actually done it yet.
We have not had a request for it yet.
I don't think I've had any requests, but I've seen that.
It'll get, so then there you go, I'll help you out with our.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we split that up half and half.
Okay.
No problem.
I got us on the schedule for this.
Great. Take care. So just get it done and just got to do it.
I mean, half the savings from RIS grant is kind of the wish, the wish list for the park. Some of the things I'd asked for in there was upgrading the electric in the water loop because right now it's just two 30-amp breakers and a 20-amp and they have to share the pedestal in the other site. So I was hoping to get where we could have their own pedestal, have a 50, 30, and 20-amp service for each site. Upgrading some of the front of sites, new electric sites, potentially a splash pad. And you park it for a sign, and six paddens.
Yeah, because they meet today, then I think discussing is our call.
Yeah.
So let's see. About $600,000 here, that's for the project total, and half of that from me.
Yeah, half of that from us, yeah.
Oh, because we have to manage that more.
Yeah. The Wi-Fi done?
It'll be probably done in two weeks. They're actually installing the hardware today.
It's there.
UMAX codes, it's almost day of the year to go out there and.
Oh, they haven't been there yet.
Maybe 75 out.
Questions for Chris?
You're submitting the demo additional for consideration in March.
Yep. Just giving you guys a heads up.
Sure. Any questions?
Good job.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Our favorite, Chris, you're.
I don't know why they laugh.
I was looking at changes to the way 911 funding is done in the county. And basically what it would involve is moving lines around with the budget. It doesn't increase the cost of anything. I'd like to change it so the 911 budget completely pays for all the incomes from the six dispatchers. And then there's a couple of other income-related salary lines. And that would fall under the sheriff, because the dispatchers are his. And then the other items would fall under, would be put over into the general fund. I've talked to the auditor about the trailer fund and we have all the equipment stuff fall under that. The reason for this, it aligns money with responsibility. I talked about this before and some questions were brought up on what the requirements were to have 911 money spent. As long as you spend it on an eligible expense, specifically I was asked, you have to split the salaries and there is no requirement for that. I talked to the people at the state board and I looked eligible, ineligible expenses. And so what we'd be doing, I set royal list and I can send that.
They have it in there back there.
In our fact, okay. And that's kind of just a basic thing. As you can see, there's no real changes in the numbers. It's just moving lines around on the budget to meet with, you know, whatever department's responsible for that. The sheriff's office is responsible for the dispatchers and EMA is responsible for the equipment. We would, I'm starting now, hoping to start this in '25, so I'm kind of getting in front of the budgeting process.
Well, my suggestion would be to submit it, submit it the way you want it when you submit your budget request or when you all do, that would be, I think, is that good or?
Yeah, no, that works. I just wanted to let you know before.
Well, I think that's the way to go. I mean, submit it the way you think it should be and then we'll, you'll have to remind us and we'll plow through that when we get there. But submit it how you think it ought to be and then when you appear, if I did, while we can talk about the changes and that sort of thing.
And then last time I talked, we talked about appropriation for the new radio console. This is just an update. The commissioners approved it then. And so we're moving ahead with that, there aren't any strong.
Good deal.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yep. So that we don't make Commissioner York wait too long. Commissioner Meeks, you two are here to probably talk about one of the things is the shared engineer. That way we don't make him sit here the whole time.
Well, I think Tim came on his own, but we can't talk about it.
Well, it's on here too, as part of the engineering business.
Canada, to be able to address it.
Talk to him personally.
Berman County was several years ago, we started approaching that work in a year. Benefits was there, the cost was always something that we couldn't substantuate. The cost of having someone full-time and we worked, like I said, we moved up six years and then low and behold, the state come along with funding. It might have been there all along, I don't know, but the state came up with the $40,000 per year addition they would give to the hardware engineer.
From East County, correct?
Yes. And so that kind of made it a little better. Still, there was still enough gap there that we couldn't say that it was providing enough money for that full-time. And our county, we've done a lot of changes in the highway department. Now we have one county highway engine, one county highway superintendent. Before we had one complete garage and so we disassembled together. And then the next step would be to get someone to partner with that also as an engineer. And then Jim has been very instrumental and worked hard on this with the state, finding out and getting that lead that we can provide. We can share that $40,000 and put it together so we come up with an $80,000 amount. And then we've already been to the council, I worked on it for several years and we got money set in already to fund the extra amount to that. And so he's working on the logistics and the different things that, coming up with ideas of how we share and that he could talk more about that. But I just want to say Berman County is 100%, 150% behind this. The funding's set in there. I think that, the thing is, it's all about, we're two counties next to each other, you know? And we build a bridge. You guys build a bridge, we build a trail. I mean, that partnership we need more and more of. And this is another perfect example, in my opinion, that we can share resources and share from this project. And I think it brings a lot more professionalism to our highway department. It will help in a lot of different engineering ways and also I think the benefit is very substantial. But mainly why I'm here today is as president of commissioners of Berman County and also talking before the council that we are in this, we support it, the money's there and we're ready to move on with this project pending. Everybody, I mean, we've got the final details. And I think Jim will talk about some of the details more.
Yeah, I just met last week, in fact, with LTAP people. I did start with the used to be superintendent of the county, who's not with LTAP. And they will help us, in fact, I've got some documents that you'd look at. These are current job descriptions for engineers, both highways and businesses, only after taking our identity through the state. Randy and I talked yesterday and Randy and I are going to be in the family to go through this. Job description, because he'll have an issue with the policy relations of what a responsibility should and should be, but also for the engineer, and we've never had an engineer in the years that I have been here, so.
Is this the actual one that we are offering at this point?
Yes. And I don't have, I have no clue what this is put together. I've never seen this before. We've never hired a highway superintendent in my 20 years. We've never hired an engineer, so it's never come up. So we're going to go through this. I'm just giving that to you. So you look at it, you may have some things you want to add to it, you have some things you want to take away from it. And then we'll create a job description. I'll give Jen Sharpie the week after. We'll get a job description put together or bring that to you, see if you guys like what it looks like. So in the meantime, if you have some ideas, just text me or email me or call me and see what you want to change. And then we will meet and they will, they will post it on the LTAP line that they use. They have access to all the engineers and all the superintendents in the state. They have access to the Engineering Association for Highway Superintendents and Engineers. So we should get the word out. I will also already talk with Work Force Investment Board and Chair Hope, I'm on that board. And they use LinkedIn. They will also post our posting there. So we should have access to plenty of claim baskets. I've already had one young guy call from Chair Hope, he saw on TV that Tim and I talked about what we're doing, trying to work to get projects done. And he called and he'd be interested in the job too. I don't know if he's had experience. I don't know. We haven't talked about that part of it, but at least there's going to be interest out there. So we will begin that process and see what they'll, Randy is looking to leave at the end of May. And I hope, like we talked before, to have someone in place, sometimes any folks who've traveled for a while before, before stepping up. I'm in with the highway department, a lot of rumors that we had excluded some people, that we might not take anybody from the inside. None of that has been discussed. I want them to understand, I know there's rumors going around, but commissioners have not even had this discussion yet. So that is, that absolutely is not true. We will post and we will take applications from anybody and explain it then, just as they would do, just as you would do. We'll make a priority list. We will have a list with the most qualified person at the top, start there and see if we can get that person for all we can pay it, so we will. I expect, LTAP would expect to pay for an engineer to be in excess of $100,000 plus we have insurance on top of that. We, Tim and I talked this morning, we would offer the engineer, both of our county insurances, let them decide, if that's what we decide to do and you decide to do, let them pick which insurance they want to go with. And then we would either, if it goes on the client, we would reimburse our half and that's the way that works apparently, that I talked with the auditor, they'll do that type of thing. And if they chose the park county plan, then Berman would reimburse us. We would expect salary to be in excess of $100,000 and then the benefits and insurance on top of that. So we're probably in that $120,000 range for salary and benefits.
So I assume you'd probably execute an interlocal or something between the two counties and once you work out the details and all of that.
Yeah, Randolph and Henry County, the way they have it set up is they have an engineer who works four 10-hour days. He spends 10 in Randolph and 10 in Henry and they have separate workspace in each county if they keep everything in one place or in that way. They are not concerned and we wouldn't be concerned if the engineer has to work three or four days in one week in Berman County because he's got a project going there. And that's the way it works. And we have to do it for us, come back there. I'm not going to pick on the hours. But the expectation would be that he's been half the time in park county, half the time in Berman County.
Sure. You're going to love why you're risen to a different part of the record.
Yes, yeah, I don't see any reason to that, but these are things we would need. How much you guys want that too, we recommend the same, yeah.
Chris? I believe at one point you're putting them in the highway, different kind of park.
Well, it's simply, you know, you live in park county and I look like Tim, probably.
And I don't have a clue who wrote these or when these were written.
Where'd you get them from?
Randy got it. He found it. He probably had some somewhere, so he, he'd do, he has to learn that.
One of the, one of the big questions that, I mean, we have talked about in these times come up is how it's going to work out and, you know, you've addressed some of that as far as benefits and where they're going to be and how they're going to do this, that, and the other. I mean, I'm not in a position at this point to say yea or nay. I'm not in a position to say how much money we'll have to find for it, but.
We had talked earlier, I don't know if you recall, but the number I recall, we were looking at planning on maybe 25. And so that was kind of the thought that if we can get a highway engineer who can pay for himself and all actually cost us 25 or so, that's probably a good buy. Like Tim was saying, if we had fun in the whole $120,000, we wouldn't have enough work for 100,000.
No, 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 no.
But we may have, well, have enough work. And what I get from LTAP and from the Association of Highway Engineers and Superintendents and from Jen Sharpie says that any highway engineer should find grants that you do not have access to because you don't have someone to do those, that would pay for that position. So it looks like it may even just be at no cost for either county, once we get them.
Well, at this point, I don't think that we have enough engineering expenses justified in any way, shape, or form. But if you can find more revenue, it's nice to make it.
That's what they're talking.
And then they may even stretch over the Community Crossings Grant, make some of those possible or at least work with that. I mean, that's, there's a lot.
And that's all the talking. But right now, we don't have much of a five-year plan. We have a five-year plan. I mean, Randy has a five-year plan, but of course that changes all the time. Randy's got the highway repair maintenance responsibilities, but on top of that, he has to be paver, he's five-year managing the plant. He hasn't managed the plant.
It frees up some time for the.
Absolutely. We're supposed to get a five-year plan every year to see if it's been modified. I don't know that I've ever seen.
Well, you'd see the engineer doing some of those types, the administrative side.
Yes, that would be there.
Stop.
And really, to me, the highway superintendent would be like the road board, he'd be in charge of what projects, once the engineer say, well, projects need to be done, he'd be in charge of doing the projects.
The other thing that brings a lot of professional input to that, I mean, as far as being commissioners, we can practically say we want extra pay. I mean, really, we want to do it. But that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to get to a place where it's supported by, by the expertise. When we say we're doing the road, it's safe, the engineer will say, I'm doing it because it's an X position. It's on X position. You know, I mean, it takes away that a lot of times this stuff is political, so. We used to have three departments in each highway garage, each commissioner would operate that garage. So he made a decision on roads, you know, and that's why we finally said, this, this don't look good. And so, you understand, it's, we part ourselves all the time. And we said, we're going to put one highway superintendent over and when we get a highway engineer, that data will come back and someone says, hey, you're paying for someone's road. And saying, well, we really didn't have too much to do with it. We have a professional expertise there and this is why, if you read that, when, when you do read that, you'll see it says there that the highway superintendent will have administrative control. Or they have a report of commissioners, but it's not commissioners telling them how to do it. They are responsible for the maintenance of the road. That's to me, that's just like that, I wouldn't rag it too much, but the health department finally, the situation with the health board and making those decisions, what the health board is going to do instead of any difference coming, you're making very few questions, very.
For Christmas, go ahead.
Yes, yes. But don't forget that. But the values that you're giving for $20,000, $30,000 a year is multiple than that amount.
Jim, how many miles of road are county roads do you have over there?
I don't want to quote you. They just came back and did a revaluation and they got more than what we used to have.
You're building, build roads in Berman, aren't you?
No, it's, but what happened, I know District 1, we had 40% of the roads, District 2, about 30%, and District 3, about 30%. the roads, District Two's about thirty percent, and District Three's about thirty percent.
They had less miles, maybe.
Well, I know that.
Well, we both said fifty, something like that.
If I say I'll do one, I'll give that with you, I just want to be sure.
Well, I mean, sure, and more, for some reason, they not, it's somewhat just a, I mean, I'm just asking a question, you know, your county is shaped way different than Park is, it makes it a different area.
I will say, Community Crossing Grant's been a bell ringer for us, and I don't know it, but Jim probably does, they changed the amount.
For this year?
One point five million dollars. So I went to the council about five hundred thousand, our crew's from out on each year for work funding, so we're, we can get that two million dollar for a year. That's where the county is less than fifty thousand.
And they need that, but if roads cost more now, they usually, you know, the lockdown will optimize and the like.
But Community Crossing Grant's been a.
I remember, I remember days when that million dollars would get you fifteen miles of overlay, and that'd get about seven or eight miles.
I just wanted to come and say.
Yeah, no, I think, I think we're supporting, you know, the devil's in the details, but that'll wait for you guys to work out, and, yeah, just, you know, eventually, I'd say you have to have an interlocal to make it work.
We will, and before I even take the job description, LTAP to post, I'll make sure you guys look at that, if you have given time to look at it, I guess that's what we see needing as well.
Jim, will you come up with job descriptions based on you're going to have an engineer or not going to have an engineer, because that would change your job.
As I said, I didn't write that. I would think that whatever the engineer would do, if we don't have an engineer, if we can state that, how we need to state it, would have to become a responsibility superintendent, have to roll in, and of course, that still would require more of the highway superintendent. I hope we don't go that way, I hope we do the engineer, just so we can free up that. You haven't seen Randy when he works, at seven o'clock in the morning, he's there talking to his crew, and he's got thirteen guys going thirteen different directions, working on thirteen different roads, and but on top of that, he's got to get the pacer results done, the management plan, the asset management plan, got to decide which roads, and the people are going to go see or don't see, and we don't see very well, because there's too many.
And deal with calls from all the.
Absolutely, yeah, and haul in material, he can have material on hand, so to be able to split this, I think we'll see more than a benefit out of our twenty-five or thirty thousand from our share of the money we paid for.
My point is, though, we're going to.
We need maybe three documents. We may need one split, two split, one for each one, and then one come on, yes, I agree. But we can write them with the understanding that if we don't have an engineer, those engineering responsibilities would also go on the highway superintendent, because they work, that's what it happens.
I think we're overall generally supportive of this, aren't we?
You always have been, I appreciate that.
Well, I think you can figure that, I mean, we're not going to.
I hate to say good things about you, but I don't know that I've ever come to you guys with a request, the reasonable request that you've ever struggled on, so I appreciate that. I think we're all the same, same boat, myself, I think.
But my main point being here is letting you know, on our side.
Sure, we appreciate that.
Well, you guys, you have another point to be here, tell them what you're running for, tell them.
Yeah, you can tell, well, I'm sure you're.
Do that, you're.
I am now a candidate for the Forty Second District of the House, the public side. Running against Morrison.
What?
Running against Mr. Morrison. I'm here to let you know I represent the people, be there for you, available, and I think we've got a great district, and a lot of things to be done. And so I'm here to let you know, and I am a candidate, and if there's any speaking engagements or anything I can come and use up with you, I'm here.
Great.
And I think that's one of the biggest things we need, is someone to represent that represents you, or use up for you, and I'm excited about it. Right now, it's just being him, for him and I, there we'll say.
Well, I think the filing date ends tomorrow at noon, I believe.
Eleven fifty-nine.
Yeah, eleven fifty-nine. All right. Well, I've never found Tim enough to be responsive, he needed to talk to me about something, and we have had plenty of conversations about various different things, including the subject you were here to talk about, so I don't see that being any different. Tim's always been going to work with however he can, too.
Okay.
I think we're good on the engineer, just keep working.
We'll do it, working.
All right, thank you, yeah, all right.
All right, I'm going to go to Department, well, I'll go to Katie, get that you've got.
I have the infrastructure abatement investment zone by Bloomingdale, they have applied every year since twenty twenty. This one's a little higher than normal, so I did some investigation, because I'll be honest, I am not an expert in utility. So I worked with the DLGF, and the reason this one's a little higher, when you report on the UD forty-five, which is what a utility does for their personal property, they have to put in also the cost to put it in the ground. That is assessed in, and it is assessed to their personal property, because they may have to maintain that line. So they have had so many requests to have fiber put in the ground for internet, that they have contracted with UNEC to do part of it. So their figure's a little higher, but that is what is on their UD forty-five, they share their UD forty-five with me, which is confidential, I can't share it with you, but it is all reported on their UD forty-five, and it is filed with the DLG.
It's legit, it's legitimate.
It's legit.
So this, basically, we need to approve this then, is that we need to have a motion? So this is basically grants them their abatement for the, for the.
For the new fiber going in.
For the fiber going into the ground, because that's what we adopted this zone.
In twenty nineteen.
Investment zone, infrastructure investment zone.
And the first year, yes, they give me their new, it's a perpetual, it's in perpetuation. The ones you've already approved, I keep putting them on to abatement, but this is for each new thing they put on each year, so it just keeps these compounds. But what they own or have in the ground prior to this abatement, they are still paying for personal property.
So this has been a new, so.
It's a new investment, which was just put in to encourage.
Yeah, to encourage.
To encourage infrastructure investment broadband in the county, and anybody that does it is eligible to apply.
Right.
They're still eligible to sign.
This is a public document, isn't it? Is this a public document or no?
Yes.
Okay, well, I was going to read off the amount, but I don't want to say that unless it's. So the estimated investment is six hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars.
I want to get it to ten and twenty-four, something.
Oh, six hundred and twenty-four thousand nine seventy. Okay. Okay, so, just like now. Any questions on this, or we'll have to have a motion in a second.
And they've done a lot of work in the year, so it's not only is it higher because of what you stated, it's also more miles, more miles that went in, so that's.
Right, they should have put that in there, normal miles this time as well.
Must've been made second, all favor. So I need to sign this far, just nobody approves.
And I need to pop it, I mean, I'm going to need to get on the original.
And then I'll have to go to the commissioners.
Yeah.
Okay, since you're out and going, do you want to have any other public comments, or Department head?
The sales file was into the DLGF early, it has been approved. We are now working fully on our ratio study. Don't see it going in, I mean, it should be going in way before the deadline, and we'll be off to the races on getting ready to roll and balance twenty-four, pay twenty-five with the auditors. And we, our new construction, we're more than halfway done with it, that real cold weather snap, we didn't send a mail, but there's one or another freezing off extremities while they're measuring. Otherwise, going well.
Yeah, good deal. Commissioner Mace, do you have anything beyond?
No, I think those two issues are the main thing, of course, the roads have calmed down, I'm surprised, even my driveway, typically I can tell the lawyers are going to be on the driveway, I expect them to be awful if it's with all that rain, but that rain and lack of water in the ground has taken them down, they settled down pretty quickly, yeah.
We'd like to see the grader out my way.
Got two graders down right now, one.
Two are down?
Another depth problem again, that obnoxious part we have to deal with. And then we have another piece that failed that they can get replaced, I think, tomorrow. I'm going to pursue, I talked to Randy, he thought it was an unreasonable, seems to me that if we're leasing equipment to operate, and we had one go down, they should be supplying us with a grader to use. We bought the time of that grader, and because of the equipment failure on their piece of equipment that we ran, I know we have to do maintenance on it, but it seems to me, there ought to be one available for us.
But we also paid for the.
Maintenance.
Yeah, we're paying for maintenance.
It seems to me, if that's not working, we ought to have one to use.
Well, especially if it gets a very long period of time, it's hard to be understanding.
Yeah, so I'll probably pursue that.
I mean, I rattled the dealership and stuff.
Yeah, and I, I know you, you checked, you asked with me about the Wi-Fi stuff, I just thought we had agreed in general, I had not seen an invoice come for us to go through on that, so once, once.
I thought you went ahead and took it and got it yourself, so.
And the only other thing I know is that Randy, Roy and Mary Ann worked to get, try to best they can, I know it's an impossible number, on the arch, how long we had.
I have it, I should have brought it with me.
Good.
And I've got it relatively close, I should look at it again before I get it, get a fee eventually.
So we think about.
I would like to say, we did make the agreement, and I don't, maybe, I think you ran this through the commissioners too, but we made the agreement, committee, that a hundred grand of the tax system would be out of our, do you remember that?
Of what system?
Of the EXO tax.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, yes.
We're going to take part on that, if you're.
That's, that's great. And I think we have to have that all committed by the end of twenty-four, spend.
Would you have, since you claim to drive every year?
We have, we can use the time, just, might say that I, I kind of like having that million dollar setting there for a pot, so when that runs out, if you would refill that for me, so we can just spend that as a new.
I'll get you, I'll get you a number.
Okay, thanks.
I got it, it's just, I meant to bring it to you last time, so I was a missed time.
And so we think about projects, what we can do, so, thanks for much.
How long was our lease with John Deere on those graders?
Five years.
Five years?
Yeah. It's been good for us, it's just when they break down, we're just stuck, but we would be stuck, we own our.
Of course, it'd be stuck, we all have been there, broke down too, you know what I mean?
This is all.
The difference now is you're down, yeah, and God knows when you get that one.
Yes, he's fixed by Monday, that will be fixed.
Yeah, I hope so.
Yeah, you do, yeah. It's just this time of year is tough, but, I mean, they run all year anyway.
It's hard to get.
Yeah.
There is a delete program.
Yeah, but we don't know, maybe.
And that's still under learning, probably. Okay, all right. Trager.
Annual report.
Annual report?
Yep.
Good, good, good. All right, public comment, Natalie's there?
Wanted to present our annual report to you all. Three two days in the mail, or whatever. So this is Amanda Adams Washburn, she's the program manager here at Park County. I'm Stacy Emmerman, I'm the director here at Park County. We just wanted to give you some data for the, for the last twenty-two, twenty-three, our annual report. We have served five hundred and fifty-one clients, consumers during that timeframe, last fiscal year, of which a hundred and fifteen clients received both mental health and addictions treatment, a hundred and sixty-eight adults received addictions treatment only, four youth under the age of seventeen received addictions treatment only, three hundred and fourteen consumers received mental health treatment only, ninety-eight youth received mental health treatment only. When we talk about that five hundred and fifty-one of those, a hundred and sixteen are under the age of seventeen, so four hundred and four are eighteen and sixty-four, excuse me, and sixty, I'm sorry, thirty-one are sixty-five older. Of those five hundred and fifty-one, four hundred and ninety-six lived under two hundred percent of property here in Park County. So wanted to kind of start with just the data, the numbers, the sheer numbers of who we're serving in this community. Then we talk about, like, a hundred and fifty-one inpatient days were offered, eleven thousand five hundred and sixty-five outpatient services were offered. When you look at the expenses that are in that packet, it includes salary and benefits, which is seven thou, I'm sorry, seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, expenses are two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, inpatient stay cost is one hundred and eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, which is a total expense of one million, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Of which, we provide twenty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-one in charity care, and we receive a hundred and four nine forty-eight in Park County tax support. Additional information I wanted to share is, like, our top five referral sources include probation, Department of Child Services, drug court, self, family, or friends, is all in one category, and schools would be our top five referral sources. Our top three addiction diagnoses that we serve include stimulant use disorder, alcohol use disorder, and cannabis use disorder in Park County. And then our top three mental health diagnosis include a depression, anxiety disorder, and bipolar disorder. The last thing I wanted to share besides whatever else is in that packet, because it's quite a big packet, includes that we employ eleven residents of Park County, so not only do we serve Park County, we employ Park County residents, too. That's all.
Good, thank you very much. Informed, informed.
I love the judges.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay, we'll start with the general business then. We failed to discuss the highway grant in our January meeting, we had indicated we would try to do that on yearly basis, it slipped by. I don't know that we're proposing any change our way, or we, it's open for discussion certainly, so.
Well, you operated it based on the table, that is now very much, the state doesn't seem to offer or update that table anymore. Based on the gas price, it didn't drop before the sentence, but with the votes that we have submitted.
Well, I was going to say, it puts up now some.
Well, the fuel project may be, the maintenance cost.
That's right, that's right, and I'm not, I would, I would not make a motion to lower it based upon that table, I just brought that, or submitted. Well, we need it in the January, like we're supposed to, I mean, it's what, so, everybody finds agreement at the same, okay, so. Okay, we're down to approval of the minutes for August seventeenth and January eleventh.
Motion for the minutes as presented, I didn't add a job on the seventeenth, so we'll change it.
Motion been made second to two, approval of minutes, all fair. Transfers. Potter's spending too much money.
Potter is spending too much money. Formal levels will be going out at the end of April, and I, when I submitted my budget, I knew there was going to be one postage increase, of course, that was back in August, and there has been a second postage increase. And so I contacted Roy to see how he thought the council would prefer to have it handled, either I could ask for an additional, or I, currently, my Board of Appeals chooses not to be paid, but we leave that placeholder in there in case somebody changes their mind. So I'm just asking to transfer the money from Board of Appeals down to Contract Services.
Okay, that's what's before you.
Salute.
Okay. Motion, motion been made second to approve the transfer, all in favor. Pay the jury.
And motion to pay the jury second.
Motion been made second, pay the jury, all in favor. Uh, we'll have additional.
Uh, yeah, yeah, these are new ones. So the first one is the End Keepers Tax Fund, and we talked about this at one, last, last week, or last month, excuse me, and that's for eight thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty cents. That is the twenty-five percent return back from the CBC that will be distributed to the fire department. Mary Ann has ran that new claim cycle, and is holding on to the checks to be mailed out along with the letter and the supporting data and the ordinances and everything establishing this. Felt like it was important in this, at least first go around, it's a way to hold story out there. I also am going to go ahead and say it for the record of the amounts that will be distributed. So the Bellmore Volunteer Fire Department shall receive, or should receive, two thousand and twenty-seven dollars and ten cents. Bloomingdale Volunteer Fire Department, nine hundred dollars and nineteen cents. The Bridgerton Volunteer Fire Department, four hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-seven cents. The Liford Volunteer Fire Department, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-four cents. Marshall Volunteer Fire Department, one thousand three hundred and six dollars and ninety-four cents. Mecca Volunteer Fire Department, five thousand, or five hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-three cents. Zuma Volunteer Fire Department, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ten cents. Rockville Volunteer Fire Department, uh, one thousand and nine dollars and ten cents. Rosedale Volunteer Fire Department, six hundred and forty-nine dollars and three cents. As we discussed last month, this is basically one month's worth of revenue by the delays that happened and so on and the agreement that we made on when they would send the money over, back over to the county. So, uh, suffice it to say that it will be significantly more next year, but I again caution that don't take that number times twelve and expect that to be, be the number. So, that's what that additional is for. Mary Ann has all that ready to, to be dealt with. Uh, problem solving court, nineteen hundred and twenty dollars, uh, can you remind us what that's for?
It's one step back for the, uh, drug court program. And this is the first year of new program. The first year new program is two hundred, two thousand one hundred and three, and taken by LCC.
The probation program, right, and the probation program. And then the opioid restricted, the amount of nine thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars and no cents. That is the conference that we have been back and forth in here about a number of times.
Right, well, and then I talked to the judge and, um, those are the four that we agreed to send to. The registration was Oakland and I thought we can go ahead and register because the registration date is, or the registration time period is pretty narrow window, and so I thought we'd agree, we'd agree to send the four, and so here's the money to send the four. So, yeah, so that's kind of where we are, but I did tell him to proceed with that, so. That is what's before you.
Um, Honesty, um, Sheriff, how many?
Well, he said four, I don't know, I didn't get into who's, what four they're sending, what four they're going.
Okay, he's going with the four.
Yeah.
He's not, the Judge, mine, Jason, uh, Matthews, I don't know.
Deputy prosecuting attorney here in.
Well, I thought he said four, maybe I was mistaken, but, okay, I thought he said four.
I was reading him a page.
Oh, okay, alright, well, I.
We can hear him.
Four, I didn't get into what four were going, just, uh, four. Alright, so any questions?
Any questions, okay? Not, I will make a motion to approve the additional estimated.
Most been made seconded to approve the additional all favor.
Alright.
Okay, within your package, you have the auditor's cash flow statement for your information. Also, the clerk has submitted her monthly report of collections for your information. Uh, we did have courthouse security yesterday. Uh, we discussed possibly having another hall of training exercise at some point later this summer. Since we have some new employees, why, I think the sheriff is gonna coordinate some sort of exercise within the courthouse building. We discussed the Park County Court Joint Security Department, which is something that has to be submitted to the state. Uh, we were told that the commissioners, I guess, are working on possibly an ordinance for weapons.
Yeah, I talked to the judge yesterday about that.
Doing weapons and, or banning weapons or whatever you're doing with that.
All the surrounding counties have that, we're, Nick's working on that, we'll just model what the other counties have and have the same.
Well, our discussion at the meeting was, we don't care what you put in it, just that we have one, so that was kind of where we were at on that. I mean, it's fine, um, we talked a little bit about camera business, because you had suggested, I think, maybe replacing some cameras along as we, as one was bad, it's a problem, so.
And I think we did, uh.
Did we, did we, I don't know.
We did some, yes, because we had that whole, yeah, I still have the one outside. And while we were at it, we, we got a EBR, our member, in the process of the changeover. And then, I thought it was eight, but it may, it was.
Well, I remember that, now, we might talk to, uh, Jason about that at some point. He mentioned that, I said they probably need to talk to you.
Well, he had, yeah, I gave him the go.
Well, I know, but I didn't remember how many we did, I didn't want to say.
I just know that there's several, and when, we do it all alone, so it's a big.
Well, it makes things to get on a program where we're just replacing after year to year.
I have to go through anything else you need to make?
No, don't forget to get that stuff out of my truck, it's in the backseat.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. Uh, we did have one false alarm on the address system the other day, I guess, a button was pushed. And the deputy was in the courthouse and responded immediately and looked down in the basement, it was an accidental. Somebody was here doing some work and it triggered it, but the deputy responded, it worked. It was a good test, actually, he meant, he was right there and it was like, oh, sorry, we didn't know that was that close, so. But no big deal. We were actually gonna have him do an actual, another test here at some point. We'll test the dispatchers and then we'll also just test the hardware itself within the courthouse. So I'm sure you guys will find out that, the sheriff or somebody involved with that. Okay, um, redevelopment?
Uh, redevelopment has not been up since our January ninth meeting. We did submit a ready grant application for the bank building, um, used for the government, kind of government in that. That's been submitted.
Plan?
The Google.
That's the old one. All the ways?
We had a meeting yesterday, um, and they, they handed us the twenty-three annual report. And, uh, I'll just mention three different functions that will be, uh, West Central. One is the electronic waste recycling, and in the brochure we'll talk about that. Uh, in Park County, they collected eight thousand three hundred and twenty-eight pounds of electronics, uh, in twenty twenty-three. Uh, their setup program is the pop away, and they collected fifty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-two pounds of pop away material, which includes tires, appliances, and medicine, and things of that nature. And then their third, uh, function is the recyclable bins out at the Top Det, uh, area, and they collected a hundred and ninety-three tons of recyclables this year, third in twenty twenty-three. So that's a, a lot of, uh, pounds of, uh, materials that goes to land buildings.
Or in our county digits, isn't it?
And then, uh, on the last page, it's got the information about their, uh, their budget. Uh, their total revenue for the year of twenty twenty-three was a hundred and fifty-four thousand. Their expenses were two hundred and forty-four thousand. So basically, they reduced their capital reserves by ninety thousand. And, uh, and typically, they're, they're reducing their reserve of about a hundred thousand a year. So that's usually at a quarter of, uh, what I said, increase.
So we're still, still reducing that.
Yeah, so we have, there's still about five hundred some thousand in that reserve. And, uh, and this would be an idea that, uh, amounts to about four dollars and fifty-three cents per capita in the town is what the recycling costs. And in most counties, it's around seventeen dollars. So, it's still quite a margin for parks and, uh, and towns. It is all the information in here, that's really good.
Glad it's being well utilized, I mean, that's the nice thing, you know, keeping that out of the dishes, so, that's good.
Except for the dishes one way or the other.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe we'll get an engineer to help come all clean those out, you reckon? Okay, new business, we have a library board appointment. Uh, Sheila Roar resigned, and so we have to make a new appointment.
The, uh, secretary of the library board recommended, uh, they met with a couple interested individuals that are on the library board and submitted those over and, uh, and still prepared to work out, recommending Rachel Mundell be appointed to the Park County Public Library Board to fill the remaining term of Sheila Roar that would expire on December thirty-first, twenty-sixth.
Most been made seconded for library appointments, all favor.
Aye.
Can you notify the library director that we have done that, because they meet this afternoon, and they'll be there this afternoon, so. Make them get that to her and have it notarized, and then she can be official for.
Okay, and we have last but not least, the data pit stop incorporated, and this is something the auditor was just talking about.
When, when it's through EXO, they provided one year of data pit stopping, that's what people can go in and do the taxes, uh, that business. My office and the treasurer's office use it. MVP is supposed to have us available to go to their systems and see past history on projects and stuff. It hasn't always worked very good, it freezes up. And all that information is on pit stop. We also use it if, um, we have a store property, we can go in and figure the taxes on it. EXO does not do that for us, or MVP did, and, um, it would just be handy. There's a website that, uh, people can go out and use it and check stuff. And I found out when they gave us this, they can manage our, um, fixed asset source, which I love to use. So, and Kim said that she.
No, we use it on the tax side, like our partners with EXO, but we guide the taxpayers and the abstractors to pay the pit stop. And they seem to like it better too.
He doesn't have contract, he's still just only four dollars a year, and I think it's all working.
And, uh, statement that's made on here was the tax rate. Price is good until the end of twenty thirty, the service is listed right. So, and I'm fearing that some of the price won't change until at least twenty thirty-one.
We also do, when we figure out EXO, um, that we get some estate and then have that through the, um, okay.
We use it in the assessor's office if somebody comes in and we don't see an assessed value change, per se, a major change, but we're seeing a change in the taxes, we can kind of go and look at the history and see kind of what has happened on that property and guide the taxpayer to the appropriate option.
Well, that is a public component, like, uh, that a taxpayer can utilize some of these things and, and, um, and then if you're all using it, I mean, four thousand dollars, I don't know that you've ever, you've ever used it quite to the extent that it can be, but it's a work in progress, right?
You mentioned the, uh, fixed assets, I mean, is that even, because you know, we're supposed to contract with the county roads and the bridges and all of that stuff, for some unknown reason, but, does that even include this or no? Kind of, could it, could it, could it include this?
I just know that we were, like, MVP had a, that type of, five thousand dollars or more. For the last four years, it's not been that great.
Well, the Board of Accounts, every time we do an audit for every government unit, seems like things on them not having a capital asset ledger that's up to date, and, and that's really, it's a bit of an asinine, uh, expectation, uh, to have this massive ledger of.
Well, especially with the Kennedy roads and the bridges, is that, I mean, it's not like they're gonna walk off.
You know, as a township trustee, you have, or typewriter on that list, or you had, uh, you know, broom on that list. I mean, it was stupid stuff.
Okay, that, that's what we needed to know, so.
And the tax, I've worked at trying to get that through.
Oh, I understand, well, yeah, because they'll, I know, they'll be on, they'll be asking, as always.
How does the general public know this is good?
That's a good question, Tom.
We can, Don's been working on our website.
On this job, yeah.
That, Don.
You wanna build a website there?
Um, he's updated our website, and we can put it on our website, that you can go here.
And we're using a new one that's, and you kind of got, working pretty all right, and, you know. That should be visible on that certainly, and you can certainly point people there. I don't know how many people visit the county website these days, but.
Or if you can't do it, I have put out to, since the state now maintains, because there are two websites, either the new one or the old.
New one.
Um, if you need help, you can also put in a ticket and they can help you. Because I put out, uh, the GIS system, it's online.
People use the GIS system a lot, and, you know, this is a tool for certain things people be doing that they could utilize. But I'm, I asked her that question earlier because I knew there was a public component to it, but I don't know if I've seen.
Well, let's get, I was trying to get that on there, assuming we, I thought it would be okay with this, so. Yeah, I mean, that, that way it'll be there for the public and then they won't look at it.
I've only scratched the surface, I'm beginning to learn the workings of the county website, but I will make it an emphasis to push that, and anything else you guys want pushed to the public, send it to me, and it's a work in progress, it always will be, but.
That's the way to help.
Yeah.
At least get that on there, I mean, it's there for the public.
Who needs to get minutes updated in there?
And whether you do it through the data pit stop or you do it through the website itself, at least minutes in both bodies need to be kept up and.
Yep.
I don't know how long it's been, that's been done. So, we need to act on that in some way, I guess, so we need to figure out how many pages, but that's always where the.
I wrote down, and then other commissioners' IP services.
Okay, other commissioners' IP services.
Other, I, we don't need to do anything, uh, we don't.
Well, no, we don't prove this, but I mean, we're just, we're all right with it.
Yeah, I'm happy, alright, well, it's.
Fairly alright with that?
It's rational.
Okay. Okay.
Run through that, huh?
Okay.
He's not here to object, so.
Well, this was four, it's all looking like that, Harrison, MVP, and we got, uh, EXO and all the things all in there.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you.